I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and equal to the equal of us all.
All right. For attendance, let the record show all council members are present with the exception of Ms. Anderson, and the mayor is out tonight, and so I'll be presiding. We have minutes, several sets of minutes, to approve from November 19th through 23rd, 26th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those will stand approved. Next item is the schedule of committee meetings for this week. Ms. Raybine.
Ms. Hands.
Oh, right, sorry.
Thank you. All of the committee meetings will be meeting here on Wednesday, December 5th. We're going to start the day with land use and planning from 10:20 a.m. to 11:50 a.m., then administration and finance from 12:20 p.m. to 12:45 p.m. We'll have public works from 12:50 p.m. to 1:35 p.m., public safety and health from 1:40 p.m. to 1:55 p.m., and then parks and conservation from 2:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Hands. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Dr. Dabari?
No changes. I just wanted to make note of the first committee meeting, which was held this evening, beginning at 5:30 and ended at approximately 6:30. And members from the Land Use Planning Committee that were in attendance at this Met School were Jordan Hess, Jesse Ramos, Mirta Becerra, and I was there as well.
Great. Thanks very much. Other changes? We will move on to the public comment on the agenda. This is an opportunity for comment on items that are not elsewhere on the agenda. And we've got a pretty full agenda for tonight. So again, this is for public comment on any items not on the agenda. Just, and go ahead and just kind of come up to the... If you could come up to the mic. Oh, so Fifth and Sixth Streets is on the consent agenda, and we'll get to public comment for that section. Thanks for asking. Yeah. Oh.
I was just going to point out for the record, it's under committee reports for Fifth and Sixth.
My apologies. It's on the committee reports, but there'll be a time to comment on it during committee reports. I was incorrect. Okay.
.......................................... More importantly, we should laugh into its horn by using of stories the insanity of the person attacking. In instance such a psychophilical, psychophilical art type of country are adequate. Many of them, or standard, or standard story data can be unearthed and presented as a corrupt and subtle enemy. Should anyone attempt to do both psychotherapy and psycho-political acting, the best defense is calling people to question this sanity, sanity of the act. The next best defense is authority. The next best defense is a validation of psychiatry practice in terms of long and impressive history. The next best defense is actual removal, removal of this pattern by giving him or them treatment sufficient to being about a period, a period of insanity for the duration of the trial. This more than anything else would discredit them, but it would extremely be dangerous to them.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on non-agenda items?
...... Still doesn't afford to be... He is that big. So that made me wonder where all the money is. And nothing's been at all. He was just about seven, three hundred, seven families in the... ... Guys, how many did he get? Taking his order, twenty-four items. Washington, Jersey, New York. And being a dude, you know, it's... Many of them didn't give staff money. Many of them didn't give them that. And we didn't give staff any more than they did. And we didn't give the... Hotel, hotel on Davis Street, thirty-four years. And now only nine, twenty-nine. Maybe what we made is a little... A little better. And partly in doing that, we just expanded within our age. And not let the function be... Be anything else. Both in our age, probably to the extent where, or whether you want to tell it. And then we have, we have plenty of resources.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any additional public comment on non-agenda items? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees by unanimous vote. We save time at council meetings by voting on these items as a package. City clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. And we'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. And if I confused anyone, I apologize. The, I know several people are here for Fifth and Sixth Streets, and I initially said it was on the consent agenda. It's during committee reports, which is item 10 on the agenda, but it is one of the... So sorry for that. Ms. Hands, if you could read the consent agenda.
We have seven items on the consent agenda tonight. Item number one is to approve claims in the amount of $626,044.95 for checks dated December 4th, 2018. The second item has two motions. The first one is to adopt a resolution of intention to amend the Front Street Urban Renewal Plan to include tourism development as a commercial goal of the Front Street Urban Renewal District and approve a project as an urban renewal project and set a public hearing for January 7th, 2019. The second motion for that item is a first reading and preliminary adoption on an ordinance amending the Front Street Urban Renewal Plan for the Front Street Urban Renewal District to provide for tourism development as a commercial goal of the district and to approve a project as an urban renewal project on first reading and set a public hearing for January 7th, 2019. The next item is to approve the audit contract for services by Anderson Zermellin in the amount of $82,800 for 2018 and $85,280 for 2019. The next item is to set a public hearing on December 17th, 2018 on a resolution amending the Development Services Engineering Fee Schedule to adjust the administrative fee charged for hazardous vegetation, removal and snow of ice removal violations, and to amend the fee charged for sidewalk snow and ice removal violations to the actual costs incurred. The next item is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Territorial Land Works Incorporated for engineering-related services for the Spruce and Nora to May Streets Water Main Replacement Project at a total cost not to exceed $50,421. The next item is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Territorial Land Works Incorporated for engineering-related services for the South Avenue and Ronald Avenue to Maurice Avenue Water Main Replacement Project at a total cost not to exceed $63,905. And the last item is to adopt a resolution in support of full funding for and permanent reauthorization of the Land and Water Conservation Fund to be forwarded to the entire Montana congressional delegation.
Thank you, Ms. Hands. I'm going to go to council comment and question first. Public comment, and then come back to council if need be, Ms. Armstrong.
So I'd like to make everybody aware that the snow removal, we've been working on that all day. We have lowered the fees, and we are reissuing the RFP to get new bids. So what we worked on today, if you'll look at the new amendments to... Sorry, I should be on top of which number that is. Number four. You'll see that the administrative fee is listed from $50 to $150, but that is only assessed after the walks have already been shoveled, and if the person did not pay that assessment fee. It's at the discretion of Development Services Director which amount to assess. And we're putting it back out to bid in the hopes that Missoula Works will bid on it. If they do, their rates are $30 for a half hour for two folks to go out and shovel, and I feel like that's extremely reasonable. So I just wanted to let everybody know, we've also changed the same administrative fee on the vegetation removal as well. So those are lowered than what they were last week. For that reason, I think it should stay on the consent agenda to set the public hearing with the new documents attached.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong. Mr. Hess, you also want to comment?
Thanks, and I want to thank Ms. Armstrong for all your work in getting this revised. I do want to highlight that this is a very good concept, and I think by the time of the public hearing, all of these details will be hammered out. I want to remind people that this is not about Grandma and Grandpa not able to shovel their walks. This is about repeat offenders who are typically out-of-state absentee landowners who have rentals or other, you know, other property uses that are not abiding by a community contract that we have, which is that we are good neighbors, and we shovel our walks, and we take care of each other. And so for this to be construed as being about people who have no ability to shovel is completely false. While we have regulations, the people who enforce those regulations are humans that are compassionate, and any assertion to the contrary is inaccurate.
Thanks. So I appreciate getting some of that additional information out there. And again, I'll come back if there are additional ones. Wanted to open up for public comment on the, any of the items on the consent agenda. Okay, we don't typically do questions. When we get to, when we get to council comments... When we get to council comments, it's very likely someone will choose to respond to that. Additional public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Zumeling. I think it's Zumeling. AZ.
Audit contracts. Maybe if the city could try a different spot in the term, uh, term, at this price, eighty-two thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, I think that's over... Way over a woman's estate on a pot of dirt. But we have, we could have a plan moving this to a different day, farther that it was a... I was used to the look of it, and therefore, it's something like Missoula. And it's a different result than the lot of dirt that Captain August could look for. I don't know. Like, and years, because it didn't cost that much if you're doing an ongoing audit. I don't think, and I'm not, I'm not in control. But I have a new runway on it, and we all have to do it. And I know that there are cheaper places to look, or maybe more expensive ones that we could, um, to the nature on Missoula.
Thank you. Any additional comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Thank you. Any additional public comment on items on the consent agenda? Um, oh. And sir, could you introduce yourself?
My name is Jeff David.
Thanks.
Um, the, um, the fees concerned, but it's been a very long time. I think it's just perhaps that it's not about Grandma and Grandpa. There is a language in this order, expecting Grandma and Grandpa from this, you know. I, my concern, I guess, would be, uh, it doesn't sound like it's a homeless requirement. Doesn't sound like people are out there at night, like, in the middle of the evening to people to shovel their walk, but, uh, you know. Trying to sell this to, to pardon me, how the state owns. Well, I'm, I'm all for that, but I also would be concerned about Grandma and Grandpa. There's nothing, protecting Grandma and Grandpa is maybe, are capable of doing. Are, are they equipped enough? If, if, if not, and they're going to be nailed, then I think it's a little bit unfair to have telling, because you... Overall, I'm totally...
Any additional comment on items on the consent agenda? Additional comments or questions from council? Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we remove items one and two? And may I comment briefly on item four?
Uh, you may.
All right. Thank you.
And you mean, not to remove, you mean separate?
Yeah, separate, sorry. So I just want to thank Councilwoman Armstrong for her work on this. I am very pleased that the fees are being lowered. Unfortunately, I am still far too libertarian to support this in the future, but I will be voting yes tonight just to set the public hearing, so I wanted to get that on the record.
Thanks. I'm not seeing anyone. Ms. Armstrong.
Probably beating your dead horse here, but I just wanted to respond to the gentleman concerned about the elderly. We've never assessed a fee on an elderly citizen. And in talking to Development Services today, we've usually referred them, or we've actually gone out and shoveled their walks for them for free. The difference in procedure this time around in the RFP is to actually have someone go ahead and shovel the walks immediately, assess a bill if it's something that we have decided is repeatedly not getting cleared. And that's for the safety factor. That's to make sure people can walk up and down the sidewalks immediately, not waiting 24 hours and 48 hours to go back out and have a city employee do it. And a lot of the change was to actually help our elderly, and folks that are disabled, so.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I was waiting till the end. I had also reached out a bit. I really appreciate Ms. Armstrong's work on this. I wanted to make sure that on the door hangers, and I think it's important for people to understand per, consistent with both Mr. Hess's and Ms. Armstrong's comments, no one runs out at nine o'clock and even under the old process and assesses anybody a fine. It's a, it was complaint-driven. It is a complaint-driven process. The door hanger that then got placed at people's residences included the information. I asked to see it from Don Veru, included the information about Imagine Missoula, I believe, was the name. I will interrupt myself, and go ahead, Ms. Armstrong.
We talked about not putting any specific information on the door hangers just because the amazing institution that Imagine Missoula is, is already overwhelmed. And they, they actually got a lot of requests from the last council comments about them, which they're happy about, but now they need volunteers, everybody, to come out and shovel. But we can certainly make sure those resources are known.
And my point in bringing it up was simply to show that there was a whole process by which we were getting people connected to other resources, and there was a time delay in it. There's no... It was fascinating for me to watch some of the reaction on social media and see that there was even some confusion about people thinking that this was a new service that the city was going to go do. City really does not want to do this, nor police it at all, and when things work. And there's no need to, or a minimal effort to. In some of the reporting, it was noted that the assessments that were made, very small number, the last year. This is not a new ordinance. To the gentleman that had some of the questions, this has been in place for some time, and it's an update to that, and generally has worked pretty well. And I think with the efforts from Ms. Armstrong and others and staff, it'll, it'll continue to improve. But there was quite a process before anyone ever was fined. And again, the real focus was on serial offenders. With that said, it will remain on the consent agenda with the item being simply to set a public hearing, so there's an additional opportunity to hear on this. And Mr. Ramos has asked the questions one and two. Do you want those together as... So we'll separate the question for items one and two, and then three through seven. So we'll do a roll call vote first on items one and two. Oh, sorry. Mr. Hess first, and then...
And I'd just point out, for anyone who's curious, that hazardous vegetation is fire hazard. So it's weeds that are above a certain height. I don't know what that height is, but it's 24 inches, and it's really about dry fire hazard.
Dr. Dabari? Thanks. I, Ms. Kears.
I'm sorry. Can we separate one and two? So one, two, one separate, two separate, three through seven?
We can do that.
Thank you.
We will do a roll call vote on item one.
On consent agenda, item number one, Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kears? Kears votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Yes. Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes no. West? West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes.
Roll call vote on item two.
I have, yeah, I have 10 yeses, one no, and one absent.
Thank you. And now a roll call vote on item two.
Okay. On item two, let's start at the bottom. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Kears? Kears votes no. Becerra? You voted yes? Okay. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Did I miss anybody?
Ramos.
Ramos votes no. I apologize. Okay, so I've got nine yeses, two nos, and one absent.
Correct. And item, on items three through seven?
Okay. On items three through seven, let's start with Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kears? Kears votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. West? West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. So I have 11 yeses and one absent.
Thank you. We're through the consent agenda. Next item is comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. We have no reports for that section. Next section is public hearings, of which we have two. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. The city council normally votes on the same night as the public hearing unless one council member requests that it be returned to a city council committee for further consideration. And our first item this evening is a conditional use request at 1800 South Third Street West. Ms. Baker has her staff report. High tech. Otherwise known as the system by which we blind the city attorney.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jenny Baker, and I'm with Development Services. Tonight, I am presenting a request from Colin Lane of MMW Architects, who is here this evening on behalf of the YWCA for approval of a group living conditional use at 1800 South Third Street. I'll also mention that Cindy Weiss, who is the executive director of the YWCA, is here this evening. The reason for this request is that the family housing center portion of the proposed new YWCA facility at this location is considered group living, which requires a conditional use approval in the C-14 zoning district. This is the location of the property. It is outlined in black with the hatch marks on it. It is between Second and Third Street, just west of the Good Food Store and south of Sussex School. This is a closer view of the property. The existing commercial building on the site will be removed and replaced with the YWCA facility that you'll see shortly. The new building will house, will house a family housing center of 25 rooms plus one overflow room, and that's the group living conditional use element, plus a domestic violence shelter comprised of 13 sleeping rooms and, and also YWCA offices. Both the offices and the domestic violence shelter are permitted by right in this zoning district, so it is only the family housing center that is subject to your review and approval. Also part of the site is the Quonset hut there at the back. It's kind of at the top left in the second red rectangle, and that's going to be retained for storage and long-term bicycle parking. The zoning for the subject property is C-14, which is neighborhood commercial. As you can see on this slide, the area on Third Street has various residential districts as well as commercial districts that permit different intensities of use. So there is some RM135, which is a multifamily district. Across the street is B22. It is also commercial but of a lesser intensity. The 2035 Our Missoula Growth Policy recommends a land use designation of community mixed use along this stretch of Third Street. Areas designated as community mixed use by the growth policy are those suitable for basic employment and services provided for the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. A broad range of functions, including retail, education, financial institutions, professional and personal services, offices, residential, and general services typify, typify this designation. This is the proposed site plan for the 72,348 square foot site. Third Street, which is on the right on this slide. So the front of the building is sort of oriented towards the right, north is towards the left. The front of the YWCA will be facing Third with primary parking alongside the building. There will also be some parking spaces provided in an underground garage. There are some outdoor areas for residents, and there is also the storage hut at the back of the lot. There's access to the site from Second Street as well as Third, but this entrance will be gated and controlled. Parking has to be provided for... Parking has to be provided for the sum of all uses on the site, which, as mentioned, are office, household living, and that's the classification that encompasses the domestic violence shelter and group living. The combination of vehicular spaces required by these uses is 40 parking spaces. The surface lot will have 45, and the underground parking will be 30 spaces, so that exceeds the requirement outlined in Title 20 for the number of parking This slide shows the floor plan for the main floor of the proposed building. Once again, Third Street is to the right. At the bottom of this slide, in what is kind of pink or gray, is the family housing center. You can see the service center and offices are also towards Third Street, and then sort of at the back will be a part of the domestic violence These are the second and third floors. Once again, family housing center on the kind of pinkish color, facing Third Street, and then at the back, the domestic violence shelter, which will also occupy the third floor of the building. Now, I will show you a couple of photos of the current conditions. In these pictures, you are standing on Third Street looking at the front of the site. There is sort of a used car lot where the parking is, and then sort of on the right is where the commercial building that exists is on the site. It will be removed. And this is if you are sort of looking towards the back of the lot, looking towards Second Street. There's the Quonset hut, and then there's an area that would also be parking. It's covered by snow in that picture. To be clear, it's parking now. It would not be under the new conditions. This slide and the next one show renderings of the proposed building. This is the front of the building as seen from Third Street. This building isn't subject to commercial design standards, but it nevertheless meets several of the requirements proposed for design, and that includes building modulation, use of different materials along the facade, and frequent window openings. This is another rendering of the new building, and in this case, you're looking from Second Street towards the southwest. You can see that there are some outdoor areas for residents and children. Now, we'll talk about the conditional use review. There are four that you will consider. One is compliance with zoning, and the next is whether the proposal is compatible with the character of the neighborhood in terms of site and building design. The third is whether it has compatible operating characteristics, and the final one is whether it is similar or whether it meets traffic safety for all modes of transportation. Compliance with zoning, engineering, and fire standards will be confirmed at the time of building permit approval, as outlined in condition of approval number one. As far as the character, this will be a new mixed-use building in an area designated for a mix of commercial and residential development by the growth policy. It's similar in character and scale and scope to other buildings in this area, and further, the new building will contribute to the general welfare of the area by serving... by providing needed services to members of the community. The surrounding area includes a mix of commercial uses that operate typically during business hours, with the exception of the Good Food Store, whose hours are longer. By necessity, the YWCA facility will operate 24 hours a day, but access will be monitored and controlled outside of normal business hours. Any outdoor lighting will comply with Missoula's outdoor lighting ordinance, and noise will be within the range prescribed by Title IX for commercial districts. Finally, for traffic safety, this area is well-served by motorized and non-motorized and public transportation infrastructure. There are two mountain line bus routes that run in front of this building on Third Street. One of them is one of the 15-minute routes. It's the number two. There is a covered bus shelter at the corner of Third and Catlin, which is less than 500 feet from this facility, and going in the other direction, it's just beyond that intersection. The Milwaukee Bike Trail is less than a quarter mile from the property, and there are also striped bike lanes on parts of Third Street. There's ample parking for motorized transportation, and any additional traffic generated by this use can be safely accommodated by the existing infrastructure. As a result, staff recommends approval of the group living conditional use request in the C1-4 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District at 1800 South Third Street, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the condition of approval. That is my presentation. I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll come back after the public hearing. With that, I will open the public hearing on this conditional use request. Please step up to the mic and keep your comments to about three minutes or less. Welcome.
I'm Cindy Weiss, the YWCA executive director. For 107 years, the YWCA has been serving the Missoula community, and tonight, we are here because we plan to build a facility for our second century of service. As Jenny told you, the new facility will house the YWCA Program Center, an expanded domestic violence shelter, and a new family housing center. We are expanding and relocating our current domestic violence shelter, which is in a seven-bedroom, three-bath house in a residential neighborhood where it has been located for 22 years. Due to advances in mapping apps, it is difficult to keep it confidential anymore. It is also too small to adequately house the 250 women and children who now stay there each year. In addition to an expanded domestic violence shelter, we are also partnering with the Missoula Interfaith Collaborative Family Promise program to create a family housing center in the new facility. Currently, the YWCA and Family Promise operate two separate housing programs for one- and two-parent homeless families. The YWCA leases seven-to-12 motel rooms each night for families who would otherwise have to sleep in their cars or camp outside. Family Promise is a collaboration of 28 faith congregations, including over 500 volunteers that shelter up to four families each night in local churches. In the new facility, we will combine the depth of experience of the YWCA with the breadth of volunteer support of Family Promise to cooperate one central program for homeless families. Our community is home to the largest population of homeless families in the state, and we're the only urban city in Montana that doesn't have a family shelter. There are up to 50 literally homeless families in Missoula every night, and currently, between the YWCA and Family Promise, we can house just 16 of them. Now, family homelessness is a problem that has been largely unseen, because homeless parents usually try hard not to be noticed. But our community has an urgent need for a safe place where all homeless families can find same-day access to shelter and the support they need to get back on their feet. We are here tonight because the time is now to see these families and to see them home. With the council's support, we look forward to doing this in our new neighborhood on Third Street. Like the YWCA and the Family Promise congregations, our adjacent neighbors, including Marshy's Nursery, Quick Paws, and Sussex School, all have a history of service in the Missoula community. We couldn't ask for better neighbors, and we are committed to being good neighbors to them. So I want to thank you for your consideration of this CUPU request. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Additional public comment on the conditional use request?
Hello, my name is Casey Dunning. I'm the executive director of Missoula Interfaith Collaborative, and we run the Family Promise program, which is an aspect of this project. The Interfaith Collaborative is overall a collection of 32 different interfaith congregations. We work with Christian, Jewish, Buddhist, and Muslim different congregations, and nonprofits as well. And it's about bridging new relationships across different social and ideological and political divides that are in our community, and helping our institutions become leaders at addressing challenges like this. We've been a lead partner in the family housing aspect of this project, and we came about that after having engaged over 1,200 individual people within our different member institutions, and having this really surfaced as the number-one concern that people were really feeling, and this critical need that we have, which is the access to emergency housing for families. Really, Cindy talked about all of the different aspects of this project, and what has been very beautiful about this partnership is that really, the vision specifically for this project is that we can create a reality in Missoula where if a family loses their housing or a person is experiencing domestic violence, that they will have a safe place to go right away. That's what it's ultimately about, and that our community is rallying around them and supporting them and being able to rebuild their lives and get back on their feet. So, thank you so much for working with us on this project, and I'll be here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hello, I'm Cindy Nesselrode, YWCA Missoula Board President, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity to share my support for the conditional use permit for YWCA Missoula to build a new facility. The current administrative office and services facility is inadequate to meet the growing walk-in demand for assistance related to temporary housing, and also does not provide the privacy and anonymity for survivors of domestic violence who are seeking help. In addition, the current off-site domestic violence shelter is too small, provides minimal privacy for victims of domestic violence, and is in constant need of repair. And then finally, the reason we're here tonight, Missoula is the only Montana city that has no stable and safe housing for homeless families. Homeless families must try to raise family and rebuild their lives while living in their vehicles. By providing housing, families will have beds to sleep in, a kitchen to cook in, quiet space for their children to do homework, and a warm shower to fortify their belief in a brighter future. This can happen through the strength of our partnership with Missoula Interfaith Collaborative, and as a result, families will have 24-hour support and encouragement. For these reasons and so many more, I support wholeheartedly the YWCA Missoula application. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good evening. I'm Robyn Shakoda, and I'm here representing Sussex School. And as a future neighbor of the YWCA, we would like to voice our support in them receiving the conditional use permit, and we look forward to partnering with them in the future and participating on their neighborhood advisory council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the conditional use permit? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This comes from Land Use and Planning. Dr. Dabari?
I move that council approve the group living conditional use request for the YWCA of Missoula, located at 1800 South Third Street West in the C1-4 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. In accordance with the Title 20 Missoula City Zoning Ordinance, sections 20.0.020D, 20.40.070, 20.85.070, and 20.105.020B, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you. That's in order. Any council comment, deliberation? Ms. Marip?
I just want to say that I will be supporting this, and I'm really happy to see the YWCA coming to our ward. I think it's a great location where it's near public transit. It's not very far from the school. It's close to the food bank and the services that they provide there. It's just a really good spot, so I'm happy to see it there, and I'm happy for the communication that the YWCA has made with their neighbors. It's been a tremendous outreach there, and I really applaud all the people who were involved in that and took the time to work out some potential differences. So thank you very much.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the folks at the YWCA and MIC for their work on this, not just on this project, but what you guys do every day for the community. I think it's fantastic. This is honestly by far the happiest I've ever been to vote on anything on the council. You have private organizations coming in and helping people free of the government, and the only thing we have to do here is kind of get out of your way. So I'm very happy with that, and thank you for all you do, and I look forward to helping you in the future, and feel free to reach out to myself or I'm sure any of my council colleagues for help in the future.
Ms. Jones?
Just wanted to say thank you to the YWCA and all the other public comment tonight for the support. I just want to say that I'm really glad to live in a community where we have these types of nonprofits that can take such leadership roles, and we have a supportive community to help the YWCA embark on this huge project, because a lot of communities are not situated to be able to do this. I'm sorry that we have the need for it, but I'm glad that we have the support in this community to address it. So, go get them, YWCA. Thanks.
Ms. West?
Hi. So, two things. So I have a child at Lowell, and I know that about, I believe, 10%, every year, I write a grant, and I ask how many of our kiddos are what we call And it's way more than there should be. They're kind of an invisible group of people who are homeless but living with family members or friends or living on couches. And we also were intimately involved with this, Skyview, folks that were being evicted last year from that trailer park. And it would be so nice to have somewhere to direct people to go that's a little bit more long-term and solid, and also moves folks into housing quicker. And I support this wholeheartedly, and I really look forward to being able to direct people to this resource in the future.
Ms. Kears?
I just wanted to mention that I'll be abstaining from the vote as a member of the board of the YWCA. Thank you.
Dr. Dabari?
So I'd like to support this for three reasons. First, on the merits, thanks for the city staff for working through this and making sure that everything is in order. I also appreciate the design that MMW came up with, and I think it'll be a great asset to the community. And also, like all my other council colleagues have voiced, I am incredibly supportive of the mission and wish you the best of luck.
I will simply add my thanks and appreciation. Godspeed. Thanks to the YWCA board, staff, Interfaith Collaborative, all the folks. And a quick question, Ms. Weiss. Is this project, I'm trying to remember, from a CDBG funding? Is there an investment?
Yes, there's city CDBG.
Thanks. So I just wanted to mention that there's a substantial investment, I believe, in CDBG funds. It's one of the really meaningful things that we get to review, and all the applications for good things in the community, and it's a great sign of government doing some investments and work for good. And we're proud to be a partner via that, via those funds. We've had a public hearing. We will have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the conditional use request, we'll start with Kears. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. West? West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. It looks like I've got 10 yeses, one abstention, and one absent.
Thank you, and that passes. Thanks, folks. Our second public hearing of the evening is a petition. Petition number is 9928-8452-7876 and 8431, requests to annex and zoning upon annexation of M1R-2 light industrial residential. And again, the staff report is from Ms. Baker. And folks, if you were here for that public hearing and nothing else, you were welcome to take off and enjoy the rest of your evening. Jenny can pause for a moment if you would like to go. I would just ask that if you have any conversations, go ahead. We can hear you in the hallway, so go ahead and head outside. you in the hallway, so go ahead and head outside. Yep, thank you for being here.
Onward.
Adjusted back to short person level. Once again, I'm Jenny Baker with Development Services, and this is a request from Nick Kaufman of the WGM Group, who is here this evening, for the annexation of five lots located along Majestic Drive and Expressway. Additionally, there are three lots along Wheeler Drive for which the city has held petitions that are part of this annexation, along with adjacent rights of way on Majestic Drive and Wheeler Drive. The applicants propose new residential development on the vacant parcels that comprise this request. This is the location of the request. The parcels are outlined in red on this slide. What is yellow is the existing extent of city limits. The parcels are located south of Windsor Park subdivision, northeast of Expressway, and west of Wilkie Street and the Wheeler Mobile Home Park. Upon annexation, these properties will become part of the city's Ward Two and the Grant Creek Neighborhood Council. Here again are the parcels to be annexed. Five of them towards the sort of south end, southwest, I guess, are currently vacant, and these are the ones that are proposed for residential development. The three parcels along the north end of this annexation request all have light industrial uses related to warehousing and wholesaling. What this slide shows is the parcels for which the property owner is requesting annexation. They are Lot B of Lot One, Lot 2A of Lots Two and Three, Lot 3A of Lots Two and Three, and Lot Four of the North Gate Development Park, plus tract 1A-1 of the Green Acres Edition This slide shows the parcels for which the city is initiating annexation on the basis of held petitions. They are Lot A of Lot One, plus Lots Five and Six in the North Gate Development Park. The parcel in the center is a condominium. It's the one that looks like it's sort of divided into four, and that's why it appears that way. This is in fact one single lot. The owners of the parcels all signed petitions in the years 2000 and 2002 in order to get sewer service to their properties. The petitions specify that the city may choose to proceed with annexation at any time, and that even if the parcels have been sold, as is the case in two of the three, that the petition is binding upon any heirs and successors. All of the current owners were notified of the city's intention to annex these properties and informed of both the LUP date, which occurred in October, and this public hearing date this evening. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula 2035 Growth Policy, and that recommends two land use designations here. East of Majestic Drive, which is kind of the orangish, the land use recommendation is community mixed use, and that also sort of bisects Lots Two and Three. And then to the west, the land use designation is residential, medium density, which recommends a density of between three and 11 dwelling units per acre. Residential is also permitted under community mixed use, but the density recommendation is higher. It is between 24 and 43 dwelling units per acre. The existing county zoning for all of these parcels is C-I1. Sorry, I can't even read this. It is light industrial. The recommended city zoning upon annexation for all of these parcels is M1R-2, and that is also light industrial, which permits residential development at the higher end of the density range between 24 and 43 dwelling units per acre. The M1R-2 zoning aligns with both the community mixed use designation and the residential one, though it does permit higher density in the residential, up to 43 dwelling units per acre, as recommended by community mixed use, but higher than the residential medium density. M1R-2 zoning also permits the existing industrial uses on the northern parcels without creating a nonconformity, as would be the case if a strictly residential zoning designation were applied here. Title 20, which is consistent with state law, permits municipalities to assign city zoning at the time of annexation as long as that zoning meets with any of the following three criteria. The first is that city zoning is comparable to the existing county zoning. The second would be to authorize land uses consistent as those approved by county officials, or the third one is that it is consistent with the land use and zoning recommendations set forth in the growth policy. In this case, the recommended M1R-2 light industrial zoning designation complies with the criteria that the city zoning be comparable to the existing county zoning. Further, it is consistent with the growth policy. As a result, the staff recommends adoption of a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula certain parcels of land described as Lot A of Lot One, Lot B of Lot One, Lot 2A of Lots Two and Three, Lot 3A of Lots Two and Three, and Lots Four, Five, and Six in the North Gate Development Park, plus tract 1A-1 of the Green Acres Edition, plus adjacent rights of way along Majestic Drive and Wheeler Drive, and zone the property M1R-2 limited industrial residential. That is my presentation. If you have any questions, I will be happy to try to answer them. Mr. Kaufman is also here.
Mr. Kaufman, would you like to say anything? Okay, thanks. Any questions for Ms. Baker before we open the public hearing? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on this petition, the petitions. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Going once. Okay, I will close the public hearing. This, Sue Lives and Land Use and Planning, Dr. Dubarry?
Okay, hopefully, this is a bit of a tongue twister, so bear with me, and Ms. Baker did a great job. So I move that council adopt a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula, Montana, certain parcels of land described as Lot A of Lot One, Lot B of Lot One, Lot 2A and Lots Two and Three, Lot 3A of Lots Two and Three, Lot Four, Lot Five, and Lot Six of the North Gate Development Park, plus tract 1A-1 of Green Acres Edition, along with the portions of Wheeler Drive and Majestic Drive rights of way, and zone the properties M1R-2 in the city, all located in Section 6 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, PPM.
That motion is in order. Are there any council comments? Ms. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was initially on board with this. I mean, on the surface, it makes sense, and especially makes sense in a vacuum. But I just got to thinking about more and more issues kind of as time went on, and I heard Commissioner Curtis's very moving testimony. I watched that on MCAT. I was not able to attend that meeting, but there's just a couple of things, well, four or five things, that I'm a little bit concerned about, and that's unfortunately why I'm not going to be able to supporting it. So I'll just briefly air some of those concerns tonight. First and foremost, Mr. Bickel, when he presented some of the financial breakdowns, I thought there would be kind of a far more substantial benefit to the current residents of the city of Missoula. And as he presented, we're actually seeing a little bit of a deficit the first year, which is understandable. There's more services that we're going to have to require more of an upfront investment, and all of that makes sense. But then, if you look down the road, the best-case scenario was about $350,000 net gain from this after you subtract the services that we're going to need to provide those folks, and then the total net profit on top of that with property taxes. And I'm just concerned that projects come up. There's things that we need that we're not seeing right now that might come up, that might put us in the red on that, maybe for a substantial amount of time. And then we get to the tax issue for some of those neighboring areas and some of the points that Ms. Curtis brought up, that it's going to equal higher taxes and no new services. That's a quote from her, and I think that that point was well made because they do have police protection out there. They do have roads, road plowing services. They have all the services they have, but their taxes are going to be higher. And she talked about it kind of being one of the last areas for affordable housing, and if these taxes go up, it's going to make the cost of those houses rise in value as well. And that's something that I've personally been arguing, as you all have had to suffer through for the last nine or 10 months, that the higher we raise taxes, the higher housing costs be, and the further away it gets from attainability for some of our lower-income folks and some of our new employed working-class folks. And in addition to that, we're talking about some of these new regulations that are going to cause a burden on some of these folks. You look at the sidewalk regulations where we're potentially looking at charging folks for sidewalks. The folks in the county are going to be subjected to that. You look at a variety of the sign permits that we require, the sign restrictions and regulations that some of these businesses are going to be subjected to. You look at some of the landscaping features as well, so we can visit these down the road. But when you take the higher taxes and you take the more regulations, it seems to me that we're taking away some more of these freedoms from the county residents, and to me, it just doesn't seem like it makes sense to do that at this time. So I mean, with all the issues that have kind of been piling up that city residents are being subjected to with the sidewalks and the water source requirements, the sign regulation, the parking space regulations for the businesses, and labor requirements, various things like that, I just want to make sure that I'm not part of kind of forcing our will on other people. And I think that that's a fairly reasonable stance to take, and that's why I'm going to be voting no. So thanks for listening.
So, Ms. Ramos, I didn't want to interrupt you. I believe those comments are all pertaining to the airport and development park annexation. That is not this item. This is a owner petitioned annexations of other lots.
So this one's specifically under petitioned, or is this about the petitions that were signed to more or less forego their right to protest?
Ms. Baker?
These five parcels are at the request of the owner. These three at the top are a result of held petitions, and the reason that the people signed the petitions at the time they did was to receive city services, specifically sewer, which they have had for 15 years. When they signed those petitions, they were saying that they agreed to annexation at any point in the future that the city chose to initiate it.
Yeah, when you were referencing Ms. Curtis, her comments were about the airport annexation work that's happening next. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. I would say that all of them are mostly still pertaining to it. Thank you for the clarification, but that was another point that I didn't get to bring up was the whole petition thing. There were some folks down here, and many of them contacted us about, they sign these petitions, they're still not happy about the annexation, and more or less, I know it's not exactly the government forcing their hand at it, but I mean, they wanted the city sewer. They needed the city sewer, so they waived their right to protest. So that's another thing that I'm just uncomfortable with. I know it's not illegal. I know it's not necessarily immoral. It's just something that I'm personally not comfortable with. So I'll save all my comments and just repeat them when the time comes.
I will be abstaining from tonight's vote on this.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt.
I will also be abstaining from voting on this item.
Mr. Hess?
Thanks. I'm supportive of this, and I guess the big thing for me is that when these parcels come into the city, just like other areas under consideration, this allows us to shape the planning for the area. If the city is overseeing land use planning and growth planning in the area, it allows us to help make meaningful improvements to, for example, any planning efforts surrounding Reserve Street. I've heard from some constituents, we all have, that are primarily in the Grant Creek area, and I think that this annexation actually specifically allows the city to address some of the concerns that they've raised over growth planning on Reserve Street. So I'm supportive.
Dr. Dubarry?
I'm going to support the motion as well. As Ms. Baker indicated, five lot owners made this request. The additional three signed petitions. As Mr. Hess mentioned, having this area in the city provides the opportunity to work with the landowners to craft the development pattern that works best for the land and the neighborhood. It provides great opportunities for us to better understand how various areas of our community develop over time, and it provides a level of opportunity for the city to be involved in additional transportation planning and all the other things that go along with land use in this area. I sit on the Urban Service Review Committee. That's a committee that looks at properties or owners. We talk to owners of properties that reside in the county but which would like to receive city sewer or city water. We routinely are entertaining requests for such services in the Missoula Development Park and the area around this potential annexation as well. And so there's a clear and direct interest on the part of property owners to receive city services, and I think, as I said before, this helps provide some predictability around the kind of development that occurs in the area.
Ms. Becerra?
I agree with everything that has been said by my colleagues, and I think this is an important piece of the puzzle in the development of this area, so I'll be supporting this motion.
Ms. Merritt?
Mr. Kaufman, looks like he might want to chime in with something now if it's appropriate. And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, President of the Council. How are you this evening? So for the record, my name is Nick Kaufman. I'm a land use planner with the engineering firm of WGM Group. Mr. Dubarry and I share something in common. We're both economists after a fact. So we have cost-revenue, which I think is one of the discussions that Mr. Ramos brought up, and I think Missoula County, and we have cost-benefit. And cost-benefit is if you look at the larger picture out here, you'll see that the 300-and-some homes that comprise Canyon Creek Village, Canyon East, which is annexed, and Windsor Park, which is already annexed, have large five-plus-acre parks with homes that face the park, much like Bonner Park in your neighborhood. It provides security, a place for kids to play. It's also connected to this particular neighborhood, which allow up to about 33 dwelling units per acre. So 33 dwelling units per acre is a density, Jordan, that you know allows for mass transit. So what we have here is we have city sewer and water on three sides of the property. If you looked at the map of the city limits, we have city of Missoula on three sides of the property, right? The cost benefit to the community is to allow for a higher density residential development and other uses allowed in the proposed zoning at this location, which is transitioning and becoming a very important part of the community, much like you saw in Third Street with the YWCA. So I would hope that the council looks at the larger picture in terms of the cost-benefit of this proposal being brought in mostly by the landowner, I can't speak for the other part of it, and allow the annexation to proceed for the economic benefit of providing municipal services instead of splitting the baby and having the county have to go through city to come in and provide services to the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I will be supporting the recommended motion as well. I believe we are done with comments. We will have a roll call vote.
On the resolution to annex, Dubarry? Dubarry votes yes. Hart? Hart abstains. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt abstains. Ramos? Ramos votes no. West? West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes, and Kares? Kares votes yes. Looks like I have seven yeses. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Six yeses, two abstentions, one nay, and one absent.
Hmm, I think we're...
That doesn't work?
No, I think it is.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Oh, got it. So I've got eight yeses, two abstentions, one no, and one absent.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there is no objection from my colleagues, I'm going to go down to committee reports before we do communications from the acting mayor and city council, since we have the Fifth and Sixth Street under committee reports, so I don't see any objections. We will move to committee reports, and we have one item under Public Works, and I believe process is to go to you, Mr. Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Von Losberg. I move... Thank you, Mr. Von Laesberg. I move that we approve option 1C for implementation following a resurfacing. This is pertaining to the Fifth and Sixth Streets reconfiguration. And that we also prioritize Fifth and Sixth Streets for resurfacing in the next round of maintenance. And I'd like to speak to the, to the motion.
Go ahead. That's an order.
Thank you. This is a process, a project that has come up a number of times over the last several years. It was initiated through a neighborhood process, a citizen-initiated process in 2012. And I think, I want to frame the discussion by saying that on Fifth and Sixth Streets, we do have some miserable problems that we need to look to solve. And from, from the staff memo, I'll just read directly from those. Those problems are vehicle speeds, crashes, difficulty crossing the streets as pedestrians, lack of adequate bicycle facilities, and wrong way driving and riding. And this process gives, well, this proposal will likely improve some of those documented problems. Again, from the, from the document here. Likely to include likelihood of reduced speeds due to the driver in the single lane setting the speed for the corridor, likelihood to reduce side swipes with one lane, likelihood to reduce rear end crashes due to removal of the pedestrian double threat, likelihood of reduced property damage due to increased parking lane widths and separation from moving vehicles, increased safety for pedestrians through elimination of the double threat, and increased bicyclist safety due to more space and increased ridership. This corridor, like I said, does have a documented crash rate. We have about one crash per, every 10 days. And national figures show that lane reduction projects reduce crash rates from 19 to 37%. This roadway operates at just 25, both of these roadways operate at just 25% of their capacity. So by removing a lane, you'll have virtually no impact in the flow of vehicles, as evidenced by the, by the modeling in the report. Also, as we see in the report, if the State Department of Transportation accepts some proposed signal timing modifications, that coupled with increased turn lanes at a number of the streets will actually improve intersection flow and function for east-west traffic at some, at some intersections. Another thing that I thought was really interesting, the bulk of the, of the opposition that I've seen to this talks about Missoula being a growing city and about, and about the need to keep these arterials open. And one thing from the report that I noted today was that traffic volumes have remained relatively steady for 35 years on, on both of these corridors. We've seen that on other corridors that are right in the urban core. Higgins Street has, Higgins Avenue, excuse me, has stayed relatively steady since the late 1960s, despite a tremendous amount of development downtown. So it's a false narrative to say that as we grow, we will not also change. And one of the things that our long-range transportation plan does is it outlines mode split goals where we will, as a community, we will try to move less from single occupancy vehicles and more into other modes. And that doesn't mean that we're going to say that, you know, that, that doesn't mean that that should be adversarial to people who drive alone. I often drive alone. It's a goal, and it's, it's a thing that we'll do by creating really nice facilities that encourage other, other modes. Last thing I'll touch on is that our complete streets policy was recently revised by this council and was recently rated the best complete streets policy in the country by the Complete Streets Coalition and Smart Growth America. And one of the tenants of that policy is that unless there is a good reason not to make a modification, a complete streets modification to a roadway, when we, when we perform maintenance activities on that roadway, we really ought to proceed with those, with those changes. So in this case, I don't see any good reason. I've, I've heard a little bit of bluster on that. I don't, I don't see anything compelling from, from the traffic count data, from the safety data, from anything that leads us not to implement 1C. So I'm supportive of implementation of this, and I hope you'll support it as well.
So Mr. Hess has made a motion that's in order. I'm going to, I want to do a quick clarification, and then I want to go to public comment before we get into deliberations. Mr. Hess, could you explain to the layperson what double threat is?
Yeah, the pedestrian double threat is a, and this may be something that Ben Weiss might be better able to address, but I could touch on it briefly. The pedestrian double threat is a, an issue on two, on roads with multiple lanes going in the same direction where pedestrians step out at a crosswalk, the vehicle in the lane closest to the pedestrian stops, and the vehicle in the other lane doesn't stop or stops, stops late and creates a hazard.
Thanks. We heard that in a lot of feedback. I thought it was worth clarifying. I want to go to public comment now. Thanks everyone for being patient. So this is your opportunity. Come up, introduce yourself, keep it to about three minutes, and we'll move through it.
Thank you for this opportunity. Last time I spoke to the council was 1971. Anyway, my name's David Boland. I live in 700 block of South Second West. And I oppose this. And most of my opposition comes from personal observation and anecdotal, because I haven't set up, you know, traffic counters on Fifth and Sixth. But I cross that street on a regular basis, couple of times a day sometimes when I was in business. And now, I go up and down Fifth and Sixth. And when this first came up, a lot of bicycle people were saying, well, we need more safety for our bicycles, you know, for a different mode of transport. And I'm all for different modes of transport. Don't get me wrong. However, it's been my observation, hardly anybody rides down that street on a bicycle, especially this time of year, to tell you the truth. You know, I mean, I could sit on the corner of Walnut and Fifth or Sixth up from my house and count maybe on one hand, bicycles going each way between seven and nine or 10 in the morning. I realize this is anecdotal. It's not scientific. Okay. However, what I find in these sorts of things are the unintended consequences of our actions. Look, I'd love to live in a city that had an infrastructure that supported a transportation system that was better and not so car dependent. I mean, I think all of us would. But in the immediate future, say 10, 20, or 30 years, this is not going to happen. Maybe cars will be electric, you know, great. Okay. But what happens is, for example, if anybody has gone down Broadway to Russell Street and wanted to stay in the lane that takes you downtown, knows that any time of day that can be backed up half a mile. Okay? Because it goes from two lanes to one lane, and the only other choice you have to do is, is to go down Spruce. Okay. Now, my, now on Fifth Street, okay, it may be true that 25% of the figure you quoted, use, that may be true. But when is the use? So here we have, let's say we have 25,000 people at an event at the university, okay? Football game, right? Everybody's parked up, game's over, and they leave, and they hit Fifth Street. All right? So you have two lanes of traffic. If anybody's been in that traffic, you know what I'm talking about, all the way down to Higgins Avenue, right? So you get to Higgins, you got two lanes, and then you're going to choke it to one lane. So either you've got to turn right, which not many people are going to do, because they're not going downtown, they're going home, right? Then you have pedestrians crossing Higgins right there on the green. So that right lane is going to be further slowed down, right? If they want to turn right. And then, you see the problem there. So what's going to happen is you will have two lanes of traffic, or at least one, all the way down to Arthur, sitting or idling, waiting to get through the light at Higgins, because it is no longer two lanes or have that choice. So here we are, you know, we want to have less carbon monoxide, less CO2, less cars, you know, polluting, blah, blah, blah. If I lived on Fifth Street, I'd probably get choked out. I mean, it happens. I mean, this is one of those unintended consequences of these kinds of decisions. Now Sixth Street, obviously, is much narrower than Fifth. And it is a problem. I agree with that. You know, it's too close to the parked cars. There isn't really enough room for a bicycle lane in there. It's dangerous. You know, okay. But I also maintain it's not used by bikes that much. When you have the alternative of hitting the railroad, hitting the trail system, going down to the riverfront trail, and going up to the university, boom, safety, good, bicycles. I live a block from Free Cycles. I like it. I support it. I ride a bicycle, okay?
So sir, I'm just going to time check. We're at four minutes, actually.
Okay, one more thing. So, so anyway, Fifth Street is wider. The bike lane is adequate. I drive down it all the time. Nobody's, you know, it's, you know, it works. So I don't think any change needs to be made to Fifth. Thank you.
Thanks. Additional public comment?
Hi, Lee Griffin. I'm a longtime resident of the neighborhood. I live a couple of blocks from Fifth and Sixth Streets. And we walk to the Orange Street Food Farm, use Fifth and Sixth Street daily. I used to walk my daughter to preschool on Sixth Street. And it's a, it's just very dangerous. People speed on those streets all the time. These are streets that are primarily occupied by, you know, single family homes. And the way that people drive down there has often made us afraid. And I just wanted to voice my support for option 1C. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Thank you, councilors. My name is Carol Bellin. I'm a homeowner at 720 South Fifth Street West. I've been living there on Fifth Street now for 16 years. And I thought it was really important to come down tonight. I want to thank everybody who has worked for years to try and move this proposal forward. I'm strongly in favor of this, really enthusiastic that it's making some progress. I did think it's important to have, have a resident come down and reiterate some important points. I will just say that as I've lived there these 16 years and watched the cars whizzing by, I just want you to understand that we are actually a neighborhood on the 700 block of South Fifth Street. There's about 12 homes there, and every single one of us knows each other, and we help each other out. I mean, just the other day, someone shoveled my walkway before I could get out. You know, when someone goes on vacation, we'll take care of their cat, water their flowers. It is a real neighborhood. It's not just an arterial for people whizzing by. And in those 16 years, I've raised a young son from being four years old up to now he's at the university. And we had a, it was nerve wracking, you know, he was never allowed to open the streetside car door, ever. And we did lose one beloved cat to Fifth Street traffic. So, but despite the fact that it is a busy street at times, actually, most of the day, it's not very busy. But there are those commuter hours where it is busy. It's just so worthwhile. It's such a wonderful neighborhood. I wouldn't trade my house, really. So now I do worry. My son is at the university, working a late shift, and he lives down on Russell Street, and he is now a bicycle commuter. He doesn't own a car yet. And I worry about him now because he is bicycling on Sixth Street, which is pretty hazardous, and then coming home in the dark on Fifth Street. So anyway, I'm just really thankful to those of you who are working to push this forward. Please move this forward. It will so benefit the future homeowners of Fifth Street who are bringing, you know, new young families in. It's going to make it a much more pleasant and much safer neighborhood for us. And I also want to say a thank you to the Missoula Police for, for patrolling and keeping the speeds down, because people do go very fast down Fifth Street. And I appreciate the city council kept it at 25 miles per hour. So all of those things helped to make it a livable, a livable neighborhood for us. And so thank you, and I hope you all have great holidays.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Clinton Burson with the Missoula Chamber of Commerce. Missoula Area Chamber of Commerce remains opposed to the proposed removal of traffic lanes from Fifth and Sixth Streets. Transportation corridors are important for business. Maintaining current traffic volume capacity is, or should be, a priority for continued economic development. As Missoula continues to grow, there will be increased pressure put on the transportation network, both from Missoula residents and from folks commuting into Missoula from outside the community. The expansion of Russell Street is an example of the growing demand being put on the Missoula transportation network. The ability to move goods across town and for the workforce to quickly and efficiently get to and from work depends on a strong and unhindered transportation network. The Chamber urges the council to reconsider this proposal and look for solutions that do not remove lanes of traffic or risk increasing congestion on Fifth and Sixth Streets, as well as the neighboring arterials used for cross-town traffic. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Laporte. I live at 605 South Second Street West. I served on the Riverfront Neighborhood Leadership Team in the council for five years from 2012 to 2017. And consistently over that time, we worked with, with city staff, with our local elected council members to move this proposal forward. We were able to get some funding to study it. There were engineering studies. We sponsored an online petition drive, worked with the Office of Neighborhoods on that. There was overwhelming support from residents in favor of this proposal and for calming Fifth and Sixth Street in general. There are studies that indicate crash data, speed data, lots of anecdotal stories of pets. Last week, a very good friend of mine was hit by a car. It wasn't on that street, but she was crossing a safe pedestrian crosswalk. A woman in Helena died today, a pedestrian crossing. I think that it's really important to really consider the safety, and it goes beyond bikes, and it goes beyond just moving traffic through neighborhoods. So I really urge the council to support this.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, my name is Gwen Hoppy. I'm a resident of the Riverfront Neighborhood. And I was on the Neighborhood Council for all those years while we're watching this evolve. I was there at the first potluck. And I'm also a teacher at Willard. And there's, you know, you've heard of many reasons why we should have this. And I'm speaking for those students there. And I can't tell you how many times it's been very shaking to just about see a kid get wiped out from that, what do you call it, double?
Double threat.
Double threat. And, yeah, they, this is a school, you know, and there's also that preschool down the way. So it may cause a slight inconvenience for some people for certain times of the day. But when you compare not only the potential, you know, life-threatening situation, but just the feeling of safety and the feeling of being able to walk through this neighborhood, being one of the chickens just trying to cross the road, it's, here's on one hand, you know, the, the inconvenience. And then, on the other hand, is the, the safety and the, just the feel, the good feeling there. And I don't know that, you know, for the, the economic, you know, standpoint, I don't know that the impact for that can, can outweigh just the, the daily safety of slowing down the traffic and not having that situation where you're standing there and somebody whizzes by you. So, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name's Jeff Paget. I live up the Rattlesnake. But when I first moved to Missoula, I lived at Ethan Garfield. And for three, I lived there for 10 years. And for three of those years, I went to the University of Montana. And because of the parking situation even way back then, I decided it was ridiculous for me to park far from campus and then have to walk in. So I rode my bike. And which way did I choose to ride my bike? I rode on Fourth. Okay? And I chose Fourth at that point in time, back in the 80s. I don't think there were many bike lanes. But I chose Fourth because Fourth was a pretty wide street. It was quiet. Yes, I did have to cross Russell and Orange with no lights, but there was, there's no lights on Russell for any street. lights on Russell for any street. And then I would just cut over in the university district and make my way to class. That, for me, was a very reasonable alternative. I had no problem. And I chose not to travel on Fifth and Sixth because I felt it was unsafe. I guess the reason I'm commenting is that when you have an alternative route for bicycles, like Fourth Street, or in the case of Spruce, you can go at the X's, you can go up Railroad and Tool Street, and then come back into Spruce at the roundabout there. It almost seems like there's a sense of manifest destiny among the bicycling community or the governmental institutions that regulate bicycling to sort of plant their flag and say, this needs to be a bike route because it's the most direct, or whatever it is. And I'm not necessarily against all these things, but when you look at the totality of things, if I lived on Fifth Street or Sixth Street, would I want a reduction in traffic? Sure, I would. But when you look at the city as a whole and our east-west routes, Broadway went on a diet. Spruce Street is, at least with the stencils, designated a bike route. If we do Fifth and Sixth, as this proposal says, the way I view it, we have one east-west route for vehicles across the city that is unimpeded, and that's Third Street. South, you have to do a little loop around Malfunction Junction. I want Missoula to be a bicycle-friendly community. I still bicycle, okay? I don't, I'm not a commuter on a bicycle. I do think there's areas the city could do a better job in bicycles. I think the recent traffic modifications done up the Rattlesnake at, Rattlesnake and Missoula and the roundabouts, as far as I'm concerned, they made it less safe for bicycles. But I think we also need to consider the automobile. And, you know, I, I'm, this proposal would not necessarily affect me that much living up in the Rattlesnake. But I think in terms of overall traffic flow, we, it's more than just, just one mode of traffic. We need to consider all modes of traffic and the convenience of getting from one side of town to the other. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Paget.
Good evening, City Council and fellow citizens of Missoula. My name is John Wolverton. I live on Eighth Street, just about two blocks west of Russell. I'm here to encourage your support of this proposal to create a better and more neighborhood-friendly Fifth and Sixth Street. I travel on these streets, both of these streets, primarily biking, but also walking, often on Route 8 on the bus, and also in my car. I've been on them a lot since I've lived on Eighth Street, which has been about 16 years. Moving forward, and hopefully funding Plan 1C is an important step toward prioritizing neighborhood safety and livability. This is, in essence, a choice between a status quo fossil fuel lifestyle or happy, healthy, sustainable cities. On a larger scale, we've come to characterize these projects as road diets. And in light of the dire future portended by the recent intergovernmental panel on climate change and the National Climate Assessment Reports, it is imperative that all of Western civilization goes on a diet. So it is important to understand that this is not just a modest reconfiguration of how this community moves itself, but it represents a small symbolic step in the direction that civilization must take itself in order to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Mr. Jaffe?
Bob Jaffe, live in the Riverfront Neighborhood. I guess I take a different position on it from what was just presented there. While you could look at it like, you know, the big issue of is it cars versus bikes and all that kind of stuff, I think this is a simpler project than that. We're talking about a safety hazard in the neighborhood, and you have a very simple way of addressing that. Right now, we're not talking about a huge sacrifice of the vehicle traffic and the vehicle flow and all the things the guy from the chamber brought up about how, you know, we're giving up something really important. That's not really what this is about. The traffic studies show a negligible, you know, decrease in traffic, possibly even, you know, speeding up the intersections, you know, if it's done right. You know, so it's negligible change to the vehicle traffic in order to get a huge gain for the neighborhood. You know, the double-threat thing is awful, and you can, you have a way to mitigate that. The, the issue with getting more, you know, safer bike lanes is great, but I see that one as almost gravy, you know, to address the pedestrian concerns. And also the parking concerns, the neighborhood that's right there, it's substandard parking. And, you know, like one of the earlier people brought up, you know, you don't get out of your car on that side. It's, it's, you know, it's just substandard. And we've got a project here that costs essentially nothing, that has almost no negative impact on vehicle traffic, and has all these positives. And it seems like an easy one. Some of the concerns about traffic flow, you know, you can look at our one lane in each direction, how much one lane of traffic can carry. Look at Brook Street, you know, look at what Third carries. These are streets that carry much more traffic than the couplet combined, and, you know, they work fine. You know, we make a lot of adjustments to accommodate, you know, I remember in, I can't remember if it was mentioned tonight, but in the chamber's report at the committee, how there was, you know, whatever it is, 90, whatever percent of people commute by car, suggesting that we shouldn't make accommodations for anyone else. The, you think of, you know, what we do with the ADA, all the sidewalk adjustments we do, all the different things we do to accommodate parts of our population, to make, to make the city work better for them. We don't just dedicate 100% of resources to what most people do. And in this case, it's even simpler because we're not even taking anything away. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hello, my name is Jessica Moniz, and I'm a student at the University of Montana. I also worked as an intern with MIST in the spring, and my project was to do the outreach for this proposal. And so I set up at the university center and encountered a lot of folks who are commuting by walking, biking, and driving on those streets daily, so residents as well, and professors, students. And I got an overwhelming amount of positive feedback from those people about the proposal, and they're excited because they do, safety was that big concern. So that's the point of my comment, is to relay all of that positive feedback that I was hearing to you from the community to overall enhance the safety of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hey there, my name, my name is Rosemary Policchio, and I live on Woodford Street. And I'm very much in support of this proposal, and I really appreciate you giving it serious consideration. I have a number of friends that have said over the years that they would bicycle more if they felt safer. And they would, they would walk, they would particularly bicycle more, but also walk more. It's just a, the speed that people are going down those streets, and it, it just doesn't feel safe. And I also think that, you know, it's in line with the resiliency model for, for people to, you know, with, with the whole climate change situation, and people need to get out of their cars and be on foot and be on bicycles to connect more. It's, it's a way to connect than being behind their windshields or behind their, in their cars so much. It's, they say, a town that's gonna, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just overall healthier if people are transporting themselves more and, and feel safe doing it. So I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Tofferlin. I am a resident of the Riverfront Neighborhood. I am supporting Option 1C, foundation of years, neighborhood discussion. I am, if this council's business, Complete Streets, if this council's commitment to activate the doors 245, if this council's commitment to bicycle, facility, and if this our state is committed to this area, with a big crowd in it, in a city that is actively making changes with regards to what it means for all users, whether they be drivers, pedestrians, people cycling. Additionally, the leaders of peace for neighborhood council, for option 1C, the neighborhood council, office, like me, know their opportunity to engage in the democratic process, to discuss ideas our city could discuss. But neighborhood council only matters if you listen to them, if you respond to their voices. For the fire, who has been meeting what the neighborhood council was seeking to, a sense of safety and comfort in our streets. The speed limit on Fifth and Sixth is 25 miles per hour. This is a residential area that we've recognized. People live on Fifth, Sixth Streets and the surrounding streets. The streets in front of their homes are not simply a corridor for conducting business or communities, though it does accomplish that. The streets in front of their homes is where neighbors meet each other and share their lives with each other. Our streets are corridors for community. I urge you to uphold your fire commitment to safer, more comfortable streets. I urge you to listen to the recommendations of the neighborhood council. I ask for Option 1C. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, folks. Any additional public comment?
Give it a test. Yeah, it's off.
There you go.
I'm Thomas Bassett, treasurer for BikeWalk Montana, part of the BikeWalk Missoula Working Group. Just like to say that I strongly support this proposal. I was able to give public comment about a year ago on part of the design process. From my memory of that meeting, just about, it was like everybody in the room was pro this particular option, which surprised me. So everybody in public seemed to be pretty unified on, or at least those, those people that were invested enough to show, show up for public comment, really seemed to be engaged on this topic and like this option in particular. In particular, safety seemed to be the number-one concern. And this proposal seems to address that perfectly. And I would just like to say, as using the Complete Streets program, you're really bringing forward a proposal that is addressing an issue that the community has. And I'd just like to thank everybody for their long, it took a long time to do this. Really thankful that everybody came together and got this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chances for public comment. Anybody who did not speak who would like to? Going once, going twice? All right. Thanks, folks. With that, we have a motion on the floor. I'll return to council comment and deliberation. Ms. Jones?
I want to say thank you for all of the emails and all of the public comment tonight. It's nice to see everyone engaged on this issue. And thank you, Jordan, for the thoughtful comments at the beginning. I think you highlighted a lot of the process, how this entire issue has been approached. It's a little frustrating for me in that there is a traffic study on this issue that's, I don't know if it's 50 to 70 pages long, and I've read every word of it. There's a lot of science and data that has gone into analyzing this, far and above the anecdotal. And that's very important information, I think, for city council to base its decision on. And what the traffic study came up with, and Jordan touched on this, was that there is a high percentage of crashes on this, these two roadways. Speed is definitely a factor, and ultimately, safety is a factor. So that means something's not working very well, and we need to look at it. And frankly, it's an archaic traffic form in a highly residential neighborhood. So I am very glad that we've had the traffic study, thanks to prior city councilors who laid the base on all of this for Ward 3. And there's also been a huge amount of discussion of having more bike safety on Fifth and Sixth. That's all well and good, but to me, it's an incredibly secondary issue to the double threat. And this is, as I said, a highly residential area with many people trying to cross Fifth and Sixth, and it's quite dangerous because we have a lovely culture in Missoula where a car will stop and the driver waves the person across, which is really, really nice. I think that's our Western Montana culture. But it's not very safe, especially when the second car is coming and there's no visibility between the pedestrian or bicyclist trying to cross in the second lane. And I want to point out that these neighborhoods are in the Paxson School District, which is located over on Higgins and Evans. So many people are crossing these streets. Again, for Washington Middle School, huge district, children, families are crossing these streets, much higher percentages in the nice weather months because people finally want to get out and ride their bike and walk. So that's just a basic safety issue there. So I am really focused on the double threat, and I wanted to also just highlight that we've had, over months and years, many emails from Willard staff saying what a nightmare it is for the kids trying to cross Fifth and Sixth. And we had a very informative letter from the principal from Willard, who, again, spelled out this issue. They're sitting there as eyewitnesses, day in, day out. So to me, it's a document, a well-documented issue, the double-threat issue, and to me, that's the core issue here. If there's better bicycle facilities on Fifth and Sixth, that's secondary. And frankly, the long-term plan is, if necessary, these streets would go to two-way, two-way conversion, which is much safer, again, for the double threat. So that's my focus as a city council for Ward 3. And I just also wanted to comment that in terms of traffic flow, there's been a lot of discussion on, we're not going to get as much traffic across Missoula. This is terrible, 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 terrible. I don't think, first of all, according to the traffic study, we should have equal or better service because we're not narrowing down to one lane as we approach the intersections. We're actually adding lanes, and on the majority of the intersections, we're having two receiving lanes on the other side of the intersection that will then narrow down. So we're going to get cars through the intersection, and then if they have to go the speed limit for the four blocks till the next intersection, that's fine with me. That's the way it's supposed to work. That's the law. And if there is a delay, in my mind, that is not as high a value as having safety in this neighborhood. So I will be voting yes for this, and I thank city councillor, the city council and the prior, prior city councilors for all of the work on this, and Ben Weiss also, who spent a lot of time looking at the individual intersections and working with the businesses and the residents who live on, close to those intersections, cross the Orange and the busy intersections, and making sure that it individually fit them. So thanks, Ben, for tweaking this to make it a really good design that I think is going to be a benefit to the city.
Ms. Carroll?
Thanks. I will not be supporting this tonight. I think that there were a couple options presented a couple, whenever we first, whenever this council first heard this proposal, and this is just not one that I can support. I probably could get behind one that addressed Sixth Street but left Fifth alone, but as this addresses both streets, I won't be in support. I could talk like some other folks did about my daily experiences, or when I drove as an Uber driver to try and make ends meet for my family, and after some large events in our community, experiences that I had on those streets. But I'll keep it short, and I'll be voting against tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart.
No, it's okay. Lots to say on this issue. Thank you again, as Ms. Jones said, for everyone who submitted comments, some of which I thought were on point, others of which I thought weren't. So as Ms. Jones mentioned also, I think ultimately, the solution on Fifth and Sixth Street is a two-way conversion. But in the interim, I think Option 1C is more than reasonable. We've gotten a lot of emails today about folks who seem to think that the, the primary reason we're doing this is to convert Missoula to Bike Nation or something. We do have a high percentage of bicyclists, but... We do have a high percentage of bicyclists, but the fact of the matter is, is that this option is a safer alternative for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for drivers, and for anyone who parks on these streets. So, it's, it goes far beyond that. As others have mentioned, there isn't a decrease, an overall decrease in level of service. If you look carefully at the chart, it's kind of hard to go through, but on all but a few of the turns at each of the intersections, the levels of service actually increase. And for those where it may go down, I think if I read the chart correctly, the, the decrease in level of service is 20 seconds or less in waiting time. Seems like a rather reasonable trade-off for the level of safety that we get along these streets. A lot of folks mentioned that, that there are issues on Fifth and Sixth with traffic, with events that take place at the university. If there were eight lanes leaving the university in each direction, or there still would be a mess of traffic. And it seems rather ridiculous to design our transportation network for the five or 10% of the time that there's an event at the university. To editorialize a little bit, about 60 years ago, our communities had our transportation system hijacked by the auto industrial complex, and I think it's time we start re-communifying our road network. And we've done a lot in this council, not just this council, but councils past, to better address making our transportation network more community-friendly. And I think, for the time being, this is something that we should attempt to do. It's at the request of the neighborhood. We heard a lot from folks in Ward Five around Linda Vista Boulevard. They came out in force talking about what works for their neighborhood, and we listened to them, although that was a bit of a deviation from our Complete Streets policy. As Ms. Armstrong said at the time, it's just paint. And, and if this doesn't work, we can repaint it. So, I'm willing to give it a shot, and I want to thank everyone for their work on this.
Ms. Harp.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think, I think we all go through this position as councilors, weighing different stakeholders' positions, the pros and cons of the status quo, the pros and cons of change. And this, this case is no different. And I can imagine, back in the decade, innovative as it was at the time, that our fellow councilors back then thought, by golly, we're growing, and we ought to do something a little bit differently, and Fifth and Sixth just seemed like the ideal spot to make it a two-way couplet. And they applied that best practice at that time. Well, as innovation and time goes by, we come to realize, well, maybe that wasn't the best idea. And we have, we have seen the crash data, and it, it is astounding to me, as you read through it, that for the amount of volume of, of traffic that it holds, it's at a greater level than some of our more arterial streets in, in town, like South Russell, for example, or Johnson, or Phillips, or even Third Street. So, then you have to start weighing, all right, so which are we going to value? People's commutes, saving them 20 seconds, or are we going to value life? And so, I think all our neighborhood councils have gone through that public process and working with staff, trying to make, not just guestimating at what, or, or trying to actually prove that our intuition is right, they actually did the studies. And, and, and as such, I believe that we have to believe that science and engineering matter. And, and that, I think, is very critical in today. Unfortunately, we've had some misinformation spring out on our public, and, and I'm not at all blaming the Chamber of Commerce on this whatsoever, but I think some people have been, have been unfortunately made to believe that we're going to reduce all of Fifth and Sixth Street from the university out to Russell, down to one lane, and that is completely false. As John, as Jase, Jordan, and even Gwen have already commented, it's well-designed to, to actually increase the lanes at those signal intersections. And at other places, it's going to put people to the forefront, not cars. So, at the end of the day, when we have to weigh the various stakeholders' perspectives, I'm going to be in favor of safety of people, no matter their shape, their size, or if they're a dog or a cat, over the inconvenience of a couple of 20 seconds for drivers. And, and I think this option 1C is going to be the best, best way we can do it. And like Julie Armstrong said, it's just paint. We can always change our mind, once again. That's what this is all about. We, we experiment, we try something out, and we have the ability in the future to change our minds.
I've got a cue. Ms. Maser.
Thanks. I think a lot, a lot of what I think has already been spoken by both the neighborhood representatives here and by fellow council members, I just always think that balance in life, no matter what aspect of our life, is really difficult to achieve. And to me, right now, this seems like an unbalanced situation where we have to think about expedient traffic flow and economic development. And on the other hand, we have safety of the neighborhood. I think we cannot think about just moving cars east to west. This, this is going through a neighborhood. To me, that is more important than expedient traffic flows. I also think we need to think more equitably about how we design our roadways, and right now, we need to give, we need to keep certain streets and certain areas that are not residential, perhaps where car is king, but I don't see Fifth and Sixth as those places. Those are neighborhoods where kids have to walk and bike and, and, and do what neighborhoods do, which is why we all want to live here. So, I will be supporting this motion.
Next, I have Ms. Merritt, and then Ms. Armstrong.
I'll admit, I was not originally very supportive of this concept. It's grown on me, however, so I'll, I'll be supporting it. The, I think, a few of the things that have, have swayed my opinion is, it, it's not going to cost us very much. It, it's in the neighborhood of $3,000 or $4,000, I think, is what was reported to us at, at committee meeting. So, that's a pretty small investment. The, we're, we're keeping the same number of lanes, or even adding lanes, at the signalized intersections, which I think is where the, the problem happens with cars getting backed up. If it does, if the modeling that we've paid for does, turns out to be in error, and the, all the signalized intersections are no longer functioning adequately, we can make additional modifications, perhaps, to the signal timing, or to, you know, put the lanes back, if that's what we need to do. It's, it's, again, it's just paint. I, I originally thought that maybe it's, you know, we just need to do Sixth Street because, unlike some of the comments that we've heard and that we've had in the emails, I drive that street every morning, and I see multiple bicyclists on that street every morning. So, it, there is a constant conflict between the cars, the bicycles, and the buses. And to the buses was the other concern that I had, was how that was going to operate, and that the plan seems to be in place for that to operate safely. So, a lot of the concerns that I had going into this have been addressed. And the one item I would really like to encourage the streets or engineering, whoever's responsibility it is, to look at, you know, after this is implemented, to, to monitor and see if, if it is successful or not, and if it's not, that we take further action. Thanks.
Ms. Armstrong.
Didn't even get to say it's just paint this time. That was last time around. 10 blocks, paint, that's all we're talking about. This is not monumental. And if this is the most controversial thing that comes across our desk this, this year, thank God, because compared to the gun issue and the water company, this is, this is not monumental, people. The one thing I want to say is that our city budget, the biggest part of our city budget is fire and police, and that's because our citizens are asking for safety. The other thing we're supposed to do, spend money wisely and listen. And this council, I fought last, well, I guess it was two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, to get the bike lanes removed from the Linda Vista neighborhood because of a 12% grade on a road. Nobody was riding their bikes up and down that road, and it didn't make sense. People ride their bikes on this road. It makes sense to have bike lanes there. And regardless of how I feel about it, this is what the neighborhood is asking for, and this is the only reason why we're sitting here, is because we were elected to pay attention and listen. So, if we're not going to listen to what the neighborhood wants, there's no reason for us to have this job. So, this is what they want. This is, they asked, they paid for a study. The study was done. The study verified what they wanted, and, and that's what we should be doing.
Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go on a lengthy impassioned diatribe, I just want to clarify, we're, we're talking about the annexation now, right? Is that correct?
Wasn't clear. Next.
Just got to keep trying until we get there. So, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm reluctantly not supportive of this, and honestly, I, I hope I'm wrong about my instincts and my gut, but I have to trust both those on this. And I hope that you both, that everybody can rub this in my face next year and say, hey, we told you so. But unfortunately, right now, I, I am not in support of it. I'm concerned about all the complaints we get about Russell and Reserve, and I'm concerned about Fifth and Sixth Street turning into something like that. Again, I could be way off-base. I, too, am concerned about traffic safety, and I think that we're probably going to be addressing that in the future when we hire more police officers that can maybe stake out some of these areas and ticket people when they're going too fast, because, again, that's unacceptable for people going 40, 50, 60 miles an hour, and they deserve to be slapped with a big fine. So, I think if we can work towards that as a council for next year, getting some more police officers to, to stake out the area, I think that would be great. And again, the double threat is a, a big concern to me. Actually, one of my good friends, his sister was killed because of a double threat, so I understand where that's coming from. That is a big threat, and something I'd like to see us do as a council, maybe send a letter to the schools and tell the drivers, ed teachers, maybe start incorporating some of that in their lesson planning and, and educating folks on the double threat so that young drivers can be aware of this, so that they're, and it's not just young drivers, but that's a bit of a start, I think, so possibly looking at that. And I'll keep it brief. I'm not going to be supporting the motion.
Thanks. Everybody had a chance. I'll be brief, since most of the comments we've made. I appreciate the comments. I, I'm going to support this. And like Ms. Merritt, when this first came before council, I, it wasn't clear to me, and it's been really interesting to see this evolve over time, and I think it's crystal clear, I don't know how you can look at the crash data and, and not do something. And as others have mentioned, it's really unfortunate that somehow this turned into, like, the bike enthusiasts were annexing a lane or something like that. We have, in my view, we have a responsibility to act only based on, on the crash data. And I, I think it was referenced, Mr. Jaffe kind of mentioned it in this way, and Ms. Jones, the bike facility improvement is, is nice to have in addition to that. Lots of good comments and lots of good modeling about the intersections and the attention there to have additional opportunities. And I, too, as I mentioned in committee, and Ms. Merritt mentioned, I'm really interested, this is an opportunity for the community because the modeling says this is a smart thing to do. Level of service at intersections is an objective, data-driven thing that we can look at, we can predict it, then we can go look and actually see how it turns out. And it's not just good to do this for this project, but it's good to vet our modeling capabilities going forward for any kind of project to see how accurate. So, I certainly will be supportive of a referral at the appropriate time. I'm interested in staff's perception, perspective on this, but we, I think we have an obligation and responsibility to look at how good the modeling was and, and learn from it. And to Mr. Ramos's comments, I don't think anybody on either side of this is going to be looking to, like, rub it in anybody's face if, if we're wrong. I mean, we could be wrong about going for it, and our responsibility then is to change and, and adapt to it. So, a couple of comments about Sixth and Fifth. I will point out that community school, selfishly, my daughter and many, and we had some constituents write in about community schools on Fifth Street. I have experienced, many people who wrote in have experienced the double threat issue there. So, if I'm not mistaken, Willard is on Sixth, and community school's on Fifth. We've got a responsibility to deal with it on both. And, and lastly, I think to Dr. Debary's comments a bit, with the big events, if you've ever been in, at the Rose Bowl in Southern California and watched them get people out of the golf course that surrounds the Rose Bowl temporarily, there's all kinds of imaginative, creative ways. Maybe this is a partnership with the university where we need to do specialized traffic flow for big events, but to, to design around those things is a disservice to the community. And actually, I remember my very last thing, I really appreciate the gentleman, I don't remember your name, speaking about the neighborhood councils, and as Ms. Armstrong mentioned, it's really important that we listen to you, and the position of the councils has been clear, and I'm happy to support it. With that, we've all had an opportunity to comment. We will take a roll call vote.
Vote on the motion. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Merritt?
Yes.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Armstrong?
Armstrong votes yes. Becerra?
Yes.
Becerra votes yes. Kares?
No.
Kares votes no. Debary?
Yes.
Debary votes yes. We have nine yeses, two noes, and one absent.
Just quickly remind people, there are tons of activities going on downtown between now and Christmas, I guess, but also that yesterday was the first day of Hanukkah, so for anyone celebrating that, Happy Hanukkah. I would like to wish my little sister a happy 10th birthday.
Also, just to clarify on the last item, the changes to the lane, those lanes are not imminent. They're been maybe a year out, at least a year out, so don't, don't look for painting anytime soon.
Seems like the last four meetings, there's been a theme, and that theme has been taking care of your neighbor, whether it's been the Salvation Army, the YWCA, shovel your neighbor's sidewalks if they're not around, things of that sort. And it is the season, so if you, if you see a family you think is living in a car, do something, say something, help them out. If you have a neighbor that you see hasn't come out the last three days and shoveled their walk, don't call Development Services and report them. Go knock on their door and find out what's happening. See what you can do to help. By the same token, please, please donate to the Salvation Army. Let's get this warming shelter open.